All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time. Please turn off cell phones, electronic devices off or to vibrate. Mr. Rick Morris, will you please lead us in our prayer and pledge this evening, sir?
Dear Lord, we thank you so much for this day and the blessed we were seated from it. Lord, we ask that you would bless each and every person here, each and every day, and that we want to thank you for all the things that you do for us and your love and your grace. As we go about the agenda tonight for the business of Ballenger, we ask that you would give us the wisdom and knowledge to do the things that would be the best for the citizens of this town. Lord, we just ask that you lead us and guide us in all that we do. I pray this is your name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, business who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Is anyone present that's not on the agenda? Ms. Lane, yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to let y'all know that Kerry Turney hasn't expressed an interest in being on the park board. We don't have a problem with that, so I'm going to need your blessing unless someone on council would see it as a conflict of interest with Tommy Turney being the city administrator. Because anytime we add or take someone off, we like y'all to know.
Correct.
Is it just an advisory board?
It's the park board advisory board. They do things for the park as far as fundraisers.
Like y'all would like one?
It is not a libertarian issue.
Well, Phil Sam, I don't know if it's just a purely advisory board, which means they advise council what they'd like to do, if y'all approve it. Is that what it is? I'm not real familiar with it. I wouldn't think it's a problem. Unless you're, I don't, I haven't looked at your charter for... It says no person shall be appointed for office, all the employees who's playing the council doesn't say anything about the city. So it's not prohibited by the charter and that...
We are not employees out of line.
No, correct. Yeah.
It's all free, shouldn't be a problem.
Awesome, awesome. Anybody have any comments or questions concerning that? Everybody's okay with it? All right, awesome. Thank you, Ms. Hesse. Thank you, Ms. Kerry. All right, consider approval of the minutes of the November 5th, 2018 meeting. If you have time to review. Everybody okay with the minutes that were presented?
I'm not sure she makes up the numbers.
All affairs say aye. All right, all right. Thank you all. All right, campus election results on November 6th, 2018 election place. You should have the printed report from the elections office, districts, everything else in the packet. And the questions or concerns concerning those that are presented. All right, single member district three. Bob McDaniel with 126, Darlene Kelly with 94. The total was 220 in that district. That was going to be... You just want the total, don't do the other six. District four. We have Kristy Gatz at 308, Mr. Eloy Fuentes at 198. Total 506. Some students minors. What else, Mr. O?
No.
We don't have to do anything on that. Okay. All right, moving along. Consider resolutions declaring election results to be correct.
Sam, hold on a minute.
Yes, sir.
I've been married three times. I'm having a roof canal next week. You know, I heard you campaigned against me, but I'm over that. So I'm a little bit, but anyway, a little paranoid on the election.
As far as?
So I would like this year corrected, 2012.
Where are you at on paragraph down here? Yes, sir. You say?
So number 6, 2018 is what I'd like to have it corrected as.
Anything else, sir?
So first one would be...
Not that it matters, but it's...
And also, Sam, the swearing pledge for...
Is what?
Romances, just to...
I don't know.
There's one in.
Yeah, that there you go.
Well, I know. You're a little guaranteed here, man.
Gotcha. All right, call up. All right, motion to accept the resolution declaring the election results to be correct. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Correction, correction.
Correct. Did I hear you second?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Morris, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, awesome. All righty. Newly elected council members to play for place three and place four will be administered the oath of office by the city secretary, Mr. Bowden.
He's the man, and he's under the control of a roof canal.
That's what I was going to say.
Sure. So did you keep it? Was that correct?
Yes, you're right.
Is my name right?
I'm going to do the orange checkers.
I'm going to say aye and then you say your name. Would you please raise your right hand? Aye.
For my name.
Kristy Gatz.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of single member district number three.
Of the office of single member district number three.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The laws of the United States.
The constitution and laws of the United States.
And I'll be safe.
And I'll be safe.
I don't know if you were doing us...
I've been doing it together, so I'll just do this.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Aye.
Kristy Gatz.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of single member district number four.
Of the office of the single member district number four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitution and the laws.
The constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And I'll be safe.
And I'll be safe.
This is not on the agenda, but presented by Mr. Eloy Fuentes in appreciation for your outstanding services on the city council, commissioner of single member district number four, November 6th, 2012 to November 19th, 2018, mayor, council staff, and citizens of the city of Ballenger, presented to you today, November 19th, 2018. Appreciate you, buddy. All right. Welcome. Congratulations. Which is number five or number six? I don't always say this. I know I'm sounding, but you're going to really laugh in a second. All right, consider setting the time and place for regular and special council meetings. This, I know this is a formality. We do this every time after election. We do this every time as far as we do meet here in the council chambers at 700 Railroad. Got a motion to accept that we continue to meet here at 700 Railroad. How's that?
I think we should have accepted.
All in favor, say aye. All right. Consider setting the salary for the mayor and commissioners of the council. Same time, yes, sir. Same time, same place, 5:30. Is that the first and third Monday? On average, it works out to where you have to have two meetings a month unless you have special meetings otherwise. All right, consider setting the salary for the mayor and commissioners of the council. Bob, you had comments about that earlier?
Reducing yours.
If I had to reduce mine, I would be sure.
I'm all in. I wouldn't mind mine being discarded for my water bill.
I know how that works.
I don't need to look into it. I don't need a paper check. I just take them all the way through.
There you go. It's turned out paid in a couple weeks anyway.
Exactly.
By the way, Sam, I probably need to know, like, $20 maybe, $3 cents.
That's right. $20 for the council, $40 for the... yeet, ha.
$50.
Yeah.
$50 to your 540, ma'am.
All right, so I have a motion to keep the salaries as they are?
Sure.
Second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. All right, consider appointing a mayor pro temp. Everybody got quiet. I am going to select Mr. Bob McDaniel on the fact that he is a longest standing council member, but he's also served previously. Is that going to... I was expecting a bigger smile, Bob.
Did you smile though?
I'll second that.
Oh, you got to make...
Oh, I'll make the motion. I told you I would say it. I'll make the motion to have Bob serve as mayor pro temp. I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There, it's a little bit of a smile.
But I refuse my suit. Under Robert Schrödel's word, he developed for himself, so. Sam would say something bad. Me voting for my suit.
Y'all wouldn't? You said for a suit. All right, let's move on. Discuss, consider, take action on the amendment to the community center rental policy and contract. You should have that in your packet. And I believe the change is basically concerning security. Is that correct?
Yes. I see no other, nothing to be concerned with than the security changes.
Yes, the security changes.
That's just the same, little bit different to the page on the cleanup, but that's mine.
So you pick these in, the security guard?
Do I pick the security guard?
You select these, security guard.
I mean, I'm asking. I'm trying to think what you...
I'm the committee to say.
Oh, it's like rent, so are you the one that wants to cover it or not?
Yeah, well, basically, it's whoever's offering everyone's it.
So it's from your department?
Yeah.
Okay.
They come to my department first. If I don't have an officer to cover or anything like that, I go outside of the department to the SO, Leonard's, to appoint a security guard. But it has to be a licensed peace officer. It can't be your, can't be your big brother brother. Yeah, it has to be a licensed peace officer, full time officer.
If there are multiple officers and you, if you don't have enough, question how you go outside.
Yes, sir.
Are they city employees while they're working, I mean, on the clock, overtime, all this stuff?
Um, no, they're, they get paid separately, but they're already fully uniformed and under official capacity. So I don't know how that, I guess I never really thought about that, if they're still a city employee or not. I mean, they're paid outside.
They're paid by whoever's in any business.
Well, they're off duty, yeah. Yes, right. So they're not working for the capacity of the city at the moment.
Right.
Will their city benefits and protections we offer still cover them?
If they are walking around the Atlantic trip and fell.
I think they're still covered under the federal law.
Yeah, they wouldn't be covered by workers' contractors trip and fell if they are chasing somebody, trying to steal something, then they're basically acting unofficially.
I'll make the motion to accept the new community center rental policy in regards to the security officers for all that sort of changes.
Second? Second. Mr. Morris, awesome. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, discuss, consider to take action on the dispatch and service contract and rural fire protection contract with Rose County. And you have this, Mr. Chestnut?
I don't have it.
It's just one of those.
Yes.
Does it end in a package? Yes.
Basically, um, the first one just is... Okay. The dispatching contract, we've been doing this for a long time, and it was inspiring. This comes into effect January 1st. And basically, I just clarified that they'd be providing it both for the police department and fire departments, since that's what they, I talked with the fire chief, and he said that's what they've done. We just hadn't had it in the contract, so he had it in the contract to make it. Might as well have it in there that they're free to do it. Essentially, they'll dispatch us, police and fire, 44 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. That's what they've been doing already. They've not had any issues about it. They pay us. County shall provide the services and we'll pay them $45,000. Equal monthly payments of $3,750, $3,750. And this agreement is a one-year agreement, and we'll have to review it, and they will move by us next year. And then the second agreement is the fire protection service agreement of Rose County that we agree to provide fire protection services outside our corporate city limits. And basically, it provides, and this is again, is an agreement we've had in the past, but basically, if we have firemen available from our fighting fire types of limits, then we'll respond, we agreed, and respond to fires outside our corporate city limits in the county. And then they'll pay us the sum of $10,500 per year. This, this contract begins January 1st and goes through next to December 31st. And so, basically, the same, I think, same agreement we've had with them for a few years. And so I just made a few changes to it, and I think it's great for us to prove that.
All right, we'll have a question.
Yes, sir.
10,500, 500, the claim that the county pays the city for the fire. Is that adequate? Well, our equipment would be going out of the city area to fight grass fires and everything, and they had them closing to our power unit. That number adequate to take care of our equipment? If they go fight a fire and we start having a lot of problems with losing the tire, the fat tire, tire burning the hoses or whatever, stuff like that to replace this stuff? Is 10,500 enough to cover that whole hole? Realize we don't have a lot of calls outside the city limits, but we do have some. And I know there's been a ton of too, but we've lost some equipment stuff to cover. So my question is, is 10,500 enough to cover it for the whole year?
In most cases, no. We had the, was it Calipire last year or earlier this year?
2017, we spent $25,800 something on one, two, three, about five grass fires of substantial size.
Correct. So, no.
And we didn't, I don't think we had any tires lost. No, maybe we had one, had to be one in Calipire, but I can't remember for a fact, but that's worth a while.
That was 2017?
Yeah.
Do we have any numbers for 2016?
No. I didn't, I didn't know we were going to talk about this, right?
Negative.
No. I didn't bring anything in. I mean, I forgot some.
Well, in most cases, your question, Rick, before, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this the fourth or fifth year that we were reduced from 20 down to 10? Or has it been longer?
Four years.
Four years. Because it was at 20, and then the county reduced it to 10?
Okay, the county reduced it.
This is, this is their agreement. This is, we don't get to tell them, this is their agreement.
We could negotiate.
The fire department themselves have been over and talked to the commissioners even during budget time. We asked, and they even presented a different way to do the different fire departments in the county and do a rotation, trying to help pay for some of the equipment and help out in that area. The thing that we had is, we've tried to gather data as far as the city of Ballenger responds to probably about 80% of those rural fires in the county. So we were trying to increase that, trying to get the commissioners to do that during their budget time is, is challenging, to say the least.
Well, I'm going to get the fire department, we take that 10,000.
Cool, but I mean, they got to get some work around, got a new truck, got more expenses. I'm with you, Rick.
Expenses goes up all the time on those trucks and stuff. I mean, still work.
Well, it's not just the trucks, as much as, I mean, the trucks are taken care of, but it's, it's going out to those rural areas, those are rural areas for the biggest.
And our equipment's still being used.
Yes.
For a little while, and we're not being compensated for it. And I don't, I don't see any good coming out of that 406.
I, I'm not going to disagree with you.
They might work on it later.
We asked, we've talked, we've been to the meetings, the fire department's been to the meetings, they've done presentations, we've calculated and gathered numbers.
We've asked for money, because...
Say no.
Do they understand no?
Yes, I was about to say. Have we called their bluff? In the past, when the city went over budget and repairs, we have went to the county and requested more funds, and they helped us out.
I mean, it's not like they would, if we lost the top, they're going to, if we went and requested, they probably would. They, they've helped.
Well, I, I think it's more of a, if we have something happen, you know, on a case by case basis, we could probably approach them and get compensated. But just for a general agreement, see, the thing is that we paid 45,000 for dispatch services.
Well, that's exactly what I...
And if we start pushing them for fire protection, then are they going to put the pencil to the dispatch services?
We're paying them 45,000 if they're not paying us for 10.
Right, but conversely, they could start going up on us, so.
Well, we can say no.
Well, I understand. I'm just saying, you know, if we can, if we approach them on a case by case basis for our protection, if we have a pump burn up or, you know, some tires get damaged, you know, I mean, unless we have some sort of record as to how much we're going to pay for our equipment, it'd be hard to ask them, well, how much are we going to need every month, every year? You know, I mean, if we're, if we're fighting fires in the county, you know, how much does that cost us? How much historically has it cost us in the last four years? Then we can go back and say, this is what we're going to require, right? So we need to get that information together.
We haven't had very many this year. I mean, and most of them are very, very small. We haven't had anything of any size, so what we've had this year, yeah, 10,000 will probably cover, yeah, I'm not saying that we should be asking more, but basically, we haven't had enough to really, I mean, they've been, not even a full acre, I think we've had five or six, nothing of any major size, and haven't had any, any flat tire or anything like that. I mean, it's been pretty quiet this year. We had one last night, but it was a... Bargain tire.
This is a good year, but last year we had some, the year before enough, so it's those dry years, so that's understandable.
Right.
Yeah, we look at it.
Second, the way it is, I mean, what's into it or table it or...
Well, their budget's already done. They won't budget right now. Yeah, we try to catch them before budget when we've done it in the past. And we don't catch them the week of or a month of, it's usually two months, three months out, and, and try to get them all understanding the need.
Well, the fire department is good with it.
Yes.
I'll be good with it. I just brought them, because I think it's kind of mismatched.
Yes, sir. I'm not going to disagree with you. Yes, sir.
Well, it's not that we're good with it, it's just, we're... That's what we, you ought to have a whole lot more money, but that's...
Well, I know, they, they ran at them hard trying to bump it back up to 20, because that's what it was before. And, and they just got flat projected, so, and again, their, their budget's already set, so.
Again, we can say no.
We can, we can.
You push, don't push.
Right, right.
Okay.
So we're okay with it?
Right now, we have to be.
I understand, I'm asking.
Okay.
All right, motion to accept the dispatch and service contract, rural fire protection contract with Rose County as presented.
To move.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, discuss, consider, take action on approving the community service contract with Concho Valley Community Supervision and Corrections Department. I believe this is yours.
Yes, this is just a contract agreement with Concho Valley Supervision Corrections Department, Community Reenrichment Work Program. Basically, it's, we have some people that are working off of community service hours, and we just need an agreement so these people can collect their hours. They'll come in to park and work with Claude or some of our other, our maintenance crew and pick up trash and maybe weedy, something very minor. And, but this is a mechanism where they can go ahead and collect hours on that. And, but this is a mechanism where they can go ahead and collect hours on that.
That's fine. Who's the supervision? How's the supervision work on this?
It would be Claude in our parks department.
Yeah, they're working for.
Yes, yeah, he would be the supervisor, but there's a, this agreement kind of outlines, you know, we're not responsible for their transportation or, you know, if they don't show up, then that's not, I mean, it's not their responsibility, you know, the, the other agency, you know, so we're just trying to outline who's responsible for what.
Who, if they walk off, the chief gets called?
Well, no, I mean, you know, it's not like we're running a chain gang.
No, I know. All right, they're working off.
Right, right, if they don't show up, they don't show up and they don't get their hours. So if they walk off, then, I mean, they don't get their hours. Yeah, I mean, basically, they're just working to get their community service hours and we'll sign off on it and then they turn it in to the judge, wherever that judge may be, and, and they get their hours. If they don't get their hours, then it's not our fault, you know, it's that individual.
I understand that.
Yeah.
My question is still, if they are here and they're working and they decide it's time to go and they walk off, then we have to.
We notify the department.
We, we notify the agents.
That's the supervision I'm asking.
Right, yeah.
You know, what we should do is is that we're responsible for getting hers, so what you can do with TML, you'll call, get the names of these folks, provide the number of the person's name and their volunteer status, what they're doing, and they'll cover them under a workers comp in case they hurt themselves.
Okay.
And so when you get this hurt, they can silence you, call TML and tell them, we'd like to cover these volunteers and they'll ask, you know, how many hours they're working and things like that, and provide their names and they'll.
Yeah, I have no problem with the program, I just don't know who should be responsible for what.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, motion to accept the community service contract with Concho Valley Community Supervision Corrections Department.
My question.
Second.
All faves, aye.
All right. All right, discuss, consider, take action on approving a contract and awarding Caldwell Bankers for real estate broker services.
Uh, we went off to bid for real estate broker services. We sent it to Caldwell Banker, Big Country Realty and Willingham Realty. Willingham, no bid. Big Country Realty, they, they came in, actually the low bid. However, Christie, we kind of held off on, on awarding yes to see if Christie was going to win the election, she did, so, and they bowed out of this bid, so the lowest bidder, the only bidder now will be Elizabeth Cook with Caldwell Banker. So that is the, the low bid. So we'll, we'll be awarding this contract to Caldwell.
Maybe we can check that.
Okay.
Second. All faves, aye. All right. All right, discuss, consider, take action on approving a contract and awarding Halco Services as grant administrator.
Uh, this is going to be for grant administrator for the, for our roadway project grant. It's $275,000 grant. We reviewed the two bidders, there were two bidders, Halco of Glouk and Grant Works of Austin. Halco will be the, it's not the lowest bidder because they're the same price, but the.
Basically, which you prefer better.
Yes, preferred better.
Qualifications.
Right, based on qualifications. And, uh, they'll be the grant administrator, they'll help us write the grant, administrate the services, they'll handle the engineering, because there's going to be some, we have to hire an engineer to qualify some of the work that we're going to be doing and so, and then they'll even write up to the end of the grant, they administer this and credit will be greater, so. That's it. I'm listening. I just need somebody to.
Is there a cop time limit to get this done?
With, okay, on the, we have to have the grant, the application in, uh, nine February, so they'll, we award this today, then she'll be here at 10:30 tomorrow. And we're going to start a schedule as to when we can get all this, all, any requirements that we need done, uh, and then, so we can get our application in about the deadline.
Any other questions? All right, motion to accept contract awarding Halco Services as our grant administrator.
To move.
Second.
Second.
All faves, aye.
Aye.
All right, all right. Discuss, consider, take action to award Gaila Fullerton to reevaluate the 2017 audit.
Okay, Moody's, we've talked about this on our finances quite a bit. I've talked to, to Moody's and there's some changes from the 2017 audit that, that need to be done, some, some, uh, account management. And it was stated in the audit and we haven't gotten quite there yet. I've talked to Gaila and she has agreed to send somebody down to, uh, it's not going to be like a, a re-audit, just figure out where we're at, where we needed to be and tell us the changes we need to make. And that's going to be a 125 an hour. And she's going to come in, look at it, uh, it may be two, three days just to figure out where we're at. And if need be, if it's going to take longer than that, she can give us a timeframe, a, a hard figure as to what we're looking at as far as how many weeks or days. And, uh, but if we can get her to send an auditor in to get us right with Moody's and then to, to, to make these changes that need to be made, uh, that would help us, because right now Moody's is wanting us to restate our audit, which means the audit is not correct as it stands with our books right now.
Not complete because of those.
Some changes.
Those several items on that very front page she gave us, right?
Right.
Back in July.
Right.
And I haven't done it.
Right.
Just want to restate that.
Right.
What hasn't been done? I mean, not how, confusing?
Well, that's what we need. I need my, I need an auditor to come in and tell me where we're at and what we need to do, so.
Those are the ones that were on, that they stayed with the first time that we needed to fix. That's not all of it, there's more?
Well, it may be that, but, I mean, that was done a while ago. We just kind of need to take a snapshot and see where we're at.
Well, is it going to take as long for them to do this as it does an audit?
No, they'll send a person in, uh, as quick as the first of December, the first week in December, and she can come in, look at where we're at, all of this is a review of the, the audit we've already had. And, uh, I just, I need somebody to come in and do this so we can straighten our, our books going forward, because we've already sent the contract for Gaila for the next audit, for the 2018, 2019, 2017, 2018 audit. And, uh, so she's scheduled to come in, uh, first week in February to, to do the next audit. Now, if our numbers aren't straight from the last audit, it's really going to mess up our audit this year. So we need to get that done. If we can get her in December, get our books fixed, and then we can go forward.
Well, that's why I was asking, is this going to take as long to this, this big audit?
No.
Last audit, because the last audit was way too long.
Right.
They got back to this and told us what we had.
Right, right. And honestly, I, I'm not sure if they finished the chamber audit yet.
Well, that's what I was asking.
See, that was put on the back, not, not, I'm not saying back burner, it just wasn't a priority.
Part of the problem with Moody's rate is our cash balance, right?
Uh, cash balance and some of the other changes that need to be made.
We can't fix the cash balance.
Their criteria is pretty.
Yeah.
We don't have cash right now, right?
Right. Well, we don't have a lot, we're hand in hand to mouth, really, so, but, uh, but anyway, this, this would give us a, a look as to, watch a snapshot, so we can fix our audit going forward.
Obviously, we have to do it in order to start it very.
Right. Yeah, because otherwise, I, I mean, it's going to just throw back the whole year and say, well.
Just compound on the next one.
Exactly.
If you don't follow what they did, they'll call, they'll give you what they call a qualify, you know, on the audit, which means you don't, they'll hurt you.
And, and Moody's is poised to downgrade us two more notches, so they're going to give us 60 days to fix what we got.
Some reason behind that?
That's because our, we're not matching, because.
The thoughts of cash flow.
Well, see, the audit's saying that this is what we needed to do and this is where we should be and then our current financials is where we're at. So it's not matching up and it looks.
Sure.
And, so that's, that's what we need to do.
Any questions?
If you want, we can proceed with hiring Gaila to come in for, uh, just reviewing and getting changes made for the next audit.
Is that the 1/23rd?
What?
Is that the 1/23rd an hour?
Yes, yes. And, um, and like I said, she'll come in, uh, for a short period of time, and if there's, if she's seeing a lot of problems, then we can, she can stop and give us a hard figure if it's going to be an extended period. But we'll work with her on a daily basis to see where we're at. We had looked at using a, a separate independent auditor, but to get somebody in to review what's already been reviewed, and, I mean, if you get somebody in that already knows what changes need to be made, we, we can advance, otherwise they're going to have to go through the last year's audit, go through the books, I mean, and, and, and an independent auditor like that on a price check was 225 an hour. So, I mean, you're looking at double the cost and probably the timeframe as to what, because Gaila already knows what's there and what needs to be fixed.
Well, under the circumstances we're in right now, it's like this, the way we have to go. I think we need to look at, have a look and see if that's going to continue with this.
Oh, totally agree. About the next council meeting, we should know where we're at and what we're doing or, or how long it's going to take. Well, not next council meeting, after she gets in. So she said the first of December, so, first week in December. And I got a contract that's ready to go as soon as.
Well, that's assuming, I mean, I like that idea. I'm still just curious, some previous conversations we've had, so we may as well find out next meeting, or do you have anything new to present us with?
Have we made any progress on finding out more than?
Progress on all that stuff?
Oh, uh, I think we're talking in regards to the three CDs that were cashed in. Uh, oh, did some research on that. Do you have, uh, the numbers on those both?
Uh, I left it on my desk.
Okay. No, but it was part of finances, so I think that's what's coming up.
Tommy, if you got into a dark area, area, suspect area, so to speak, I don't mean that, you're kind of suspicious of, wouldn't you want to go home and hire a forensic auditor of some sort?
Well.
After Gaila does her little thing?
If, if, if there was something.
I mean, make it item specific or area specific that you're troubled with.
Right. If, if she got in there and found red flags.
Yeah.
Because she has experience and they know what to look for, and if there's an, an area in specific that they would like to, to inquire some more, she could let us know and, uh, then we could, you know, then we could go out to an independent auditor and, 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 and look for something more like a forensic, you know. But, uh, you know, this is kind of the, I think the best of both worlds at the moment because I think you were saying forensic audit is, you know, deep and expensive and, and you have no direction, but, you know, this, you know, if something came up in this and they could find a direction to go in.
So Gaila's already looked at our books once.
Right.
But she's going to come look at them again and maybe see something she didn't?
But it's not her specifically, she has a person that, that.
With the firm.
Right, with the firm and can come in and.
How is this different?
Tell us what we, well, what she did before was an audit. Are we, are we doing what we need to do? Okay, her and the law, okay? And, uh, you know, is our money moving like it's supposed to? She had had some, some changes she suggested in the audit and, uh, some of them have been done, some of them haven't, so, and, and we're getting questions from the Texas Water Development Board as to, you know, typically you have a, what they call sinking fund for some of our, our accounts. We paid for the, uh, the, our new water plant, okay? Texas Development Board would like to see us put money aside every month for 12 months. Now, the way we, we're structured currently, uh, we do it for nine months because we, uh, we use, uh, tax, uh, tax money, uh, a check that comes in to us and that way we can pay in June, so, you know, uh, we need to see what we're doing and if we can change and what needs to change, you know, and what's going to be the fallout from some of that, right? So if we move our whole system from a nine-month system to 12-month system, because our, our New Year starts in October, right, and not in June or December, so, uh, that, having somebody come in can, can look at that bigger picture and help us make adjustments.
So Tommy is kind of continuing her conversation a little bit. Those CDs that were cashed in?
Yes, sir.
I noticed there the bank president had written, 225,000 would be put back into an account when this grant money came in for the sewer fund?
Right.
Was that 225 ever put back in and that was in 2015?
I, I don't know yet. We're looking.
Did you see business paper? How did you find that out?
Not yet, not yet.
So, you know, you were around, I don't know how involved.
I remember vaguely when it was brought in and I've kept asking questions as well.
Yeah. Well, what it was, in the notes there, they had a sewer treatment plant and I'm not sure if the grant or how, we're still looking into it, but, uh, in the notes it said that 225,000 needed to be paid and then we get reimbursed. Now, uh, and also on the notes, the citizens, we reimburse and they would put that money back into a CD.
Do we have any CDs down there?
We got two CDs, one's for, I believe, 113,000 and the other one's for 123.
So 325 ain't going to get put back into a CD?
No.
Okay.
Well, well, we don't know, I mean, we had five, right, and those had not been cashed in. Uh, uh, the other three were cashed in to the tune of 350.
360.
360,000 dollars, okay? Uh, and I know some loans were paid against, that, that were on those CDs that were paid off. Okay, so what we're looking for now is the difference between what was paid off and what was cashed in and where that money was used, so.
Tommy, in the future also, and I guess this is to protect Rita also.
Yes.
I would personally like to see a couple signature.
That is, yes.
Rita's going to sign those on her own.
Right.
And also I would like for funds that largely brought before council.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Now, and these were not.
Yeah, there may not be.
Before either CD is cashed in, it needs to come before the council and explain why they need to be cashed.
And Rick. Bo was saying these did not come before council.
No, I know they did, right. They did?
They did.
I don't know.
They did, they didn't play it, they, they should.
Yeah. They, they should have. And ask the bank why and, and what happened when Tommy had, or whoever sent these out, maybe, who was before you?
I think there's something from Tommy's time from whatever.
Well, whoever sent the CDs out, okay, Bo actually went in there and did the, the actual setup of the CD. So technically she was the only one that could cash it out. Brian. Brian, myself, any of the city council, nobody else cashed out except the one who signs it in, right? So that's why, and then Brian asked Bo to go do that, and, uh, fortunately, she, instead of cashing any more out, she had him put a loan against one of them, which actually held it. And, and so he couldn't cash that one out. And then I put a loan on for the fire truck, which helped the second one, so they can't be cashed.
We're missing two twenty-five. I mean, if that stuff went to legitimate bills, that's fine.
Right.
But we've got some grant money that's supposed to come back and go back to the bank from what the notes said.
Right. So, so really.
We need to find two twenty-five.
That also depends on how the grant paid out, we'd have to check on that.
Right.
Because the grant doesn't always pay out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, so, we gotta dig and find, and this was, what, twenty fifteen, Bo? So we gotta figure out where everything went from. Because, because you're looking at the difference between what, okay, three hundred and sixty minus your loan payments, okay, then that gives you a total, okay? And then your two hundred and twenty-five coming from your grant, you know, I mean, we gotta look at how the grant was set up, how it was paid back, and kind of reconcile. So that's, that's our, our homework.
So how much more of the three sixty are we trying to do locally?
Well, Bo has some figures that she's found.
One ninety-two, five eighty-three.
And the rest was made towards loan payments?
Yeah. So we gotta reconcile what she has there, what was paid against the loan, and what's come in from the grant.
Was it imperative that these CDs be cashed in? I mean, what I'm asking is, was, did we have to cash these CDs in to pay off this loan that was against them, was that imperative, or was that?
I don't know, we, that, that's something we're gonna have to look into and see, you know, what, what the, uh, what they're used for, you know, I mean, because it could have been something that we might have needed.
I mean, if the loan was coming due, we had to pay it one thing, but if it wasn't, then we just did it.
Well, and as low as CDs are, you had a point something interest where the loan might have been a five or six, seven percent interest, so.
That's what I'm.
Well, and that's something I'm just, we're gonna have to look at, because the, the rates for the CD was nominal, you know, I mean, we're not getting anything for the CD. If we're paying six percent for the loan, it might make sense to pay that off. However, you know, you know, if, if, if you have more funds coming in to replace it, i.e. your two hundred and twenty-five thousand, then, then, you know, you can, you can flip that over, but, uh.
I would recommend, and I don't know, we keep all most of the money in Brownwood, there's two pooled accounts, TexStar and Texpool, they're both Texas state backed accounts, and, but they're, you know, it's just like having cash in a bank account, you tap it at any time you want. You know, CDs are downside to all that, period.
Yeah.
And certainly, I think these, Texas Pool, Texas are, are paying about as much as a CD does, and so at least you give you the flexibility, you use the money when you need it, and so might be something you check into is to put in CDs, CDs are just, especially if that's money that you might need some more.
Yeah. So. All right. What does the city currently have in CDs, Tony? Uh, a hundred and twenty-three thousand and a hundred and thirteen. So two hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Two hundred and thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Two thirty-seven, five seventy-nine, eighty-four.
Yes, sir.
I got a question also. Uh, I believe it says in the charter that the city administrator is a financial officer, investment officer, it's not Bo neither.
Yes.
So wherever the manager was, is the one that had to sign off on CDs, even though she may have signed with him and went down.
Right.
Right, considering where you said, they're responsible.
That is correct. That is.
I hope y'all are still following the charter that our homework. So no, it seems like y'all lost, y'all didn't lose it.
Yeah.
One of them lost it.
What, what happened? And then we're talking. But, but in talking to the banker, okay, he, 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 Brian is the one who directed that, and, and, and he's, that's where the notes came from. So, uh, you know, uh, it's just Bonita had to actually physically sign it out, that, for banking purposes.
I hope that the new council people get a copy of the charter.
Yes, yes.
And we are a home rule city.
Yes.
And they're just supposed to give a financial report, Bo, every thirty days, right?
Yes.
Did that happen?
I haven't seen one here, I've been here, done it.
Except, well, well, well.
It's in your charter, if you read it, if you got it.
Get one every month.
The charter that I read was really outdated, so I don't know if that's.
It has to be voted on by the citizens, so it doesn't update it when we want.
We need to update the charter.
Yeah, yes.
The only way to be updated is by election, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
Can't change the.
It's, it's basically your constitution, vote one by the citizen.
I thought it was being updated a year or two.
Ordinance, that's the order.
City code.
We can update the city code here in a month, sure.
Okay, so, uh, anyway, sorry, I, I need Gala Ford to send a, if y'all can move to make a motion to go forward, then we can go forward.
Tommy, could I bring up another thing here, since you're talking about audits that I'm really bothered by, and I know Jason got a call?
Yes, sir.
And I did also. And it gets to the point, like, I can't answer some of the questions, it makes me feel incompetent, and I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be viewed like that.
I understand.
And the topic I'd like to explore with you is AirMed.
Yes.
AirMed.
Yes.
So Jason got a call.
Right, he was, took off, one today and one Friday.
So, wait a minute.
Okay.
So, I called AirMed today, talked to the business office, a guy named Hayden. We have probably less than a hundred people signed on with AirMed for helicopter service, getting five dollars a month deducted from the utility bill.
Yes, sir.
Their last payment was in August. This is what the business office said. This is AirMed, I talked to a guy named Hayden in the business office.
Right.
So, since August, there's been no payment. Our ninety-day grace period expired. All members have been dropped. The citizens that were signed on have been removed, and our membership list is going to have a grace period. I have Rick Sonnenberg's utility bill, current bill here, where he has five dollars on his utility bill for AirMed service.
Right.
No service. I asked the guy, what if one of these people that's been paying needed a chopper? Since we're out of the grace period, our contract has expired, he said, tough luck.
Right.
And we're talking about a thirty, forty thousand dollar helicopter, right?
Yes.
There are citizens out there that still think you're being coked on this contract for chopper service. They're not.
Right.
My question is, where, where's the money going?
We look back today and they have received, we have written a check every month.
You need to call them. Oh, last check was August, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents.
We, we have a hundred and thirty people on AirMed service, uh, and we got calls, as, as y'all did, uh, that service had been suspended. Bonita's attempted to call them and rectify, and we pull up our records, uh, uh, we pay them, is it bi-weekly?
Monthly.
Monthly, good, because we looked at the, our last two or three payments, and, uh, so.
Before that, there was a payment of nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, which was a multi-month payment, not a per-month payment.
Okay.
So something's broken.
I, I will look into it, and then, uh, I, I just, I need to be able to give y'all some feedback quicker than the next meeting, so, uh, we'll, we'll look into it, uh, today's Monday.
But the lady that called Jason called me.
Okay.
She called AirMed and said, you've been dropped.
Right.
So she was sent on a sixty-dollar annual payment, or sixty-five, whatever it was.
Right.
Which she was informed that she was.
Right, right. And, and I know some other people that also paid, uh, in the last two, three months, that they, they weren't covered, so, uh, we'll have to get to the bottom of it, and we'll, we'll be able to come back to you as a group or individually, uh, by instinct, till it's sorted out and figure out exactly what happened with AirMed.
Well, you know, have, you know, people perceive this as corruption, and I'd rather the corruption not be your biggest industry.
That is true.
And I don't know if it's corruption. No, I'm just saying, people perceive it as that. And then, then I think some, the council might be included in, because we don't know.
Right.
I can't answer those questions.
I understand. Right.
And also, another area.
Yes, sir.
Rick Sonnenberg called me today.
Okay.
The Cemetery Association, last, that's a dollar, a dollar a month added in people's utility, those of you who want to participate.
Right.
They haven't got their checks since.
Cemetery Association, Evergreen Cemetery.
Cemetery Association. Initially, Rick said, and by the way, he's a top entree keeper and he's a treasurer association, he said initially the city would send them the check, stood up and said, what month? January, February, whatever, the city quit doing that. He don't know what month he's being paid for. Sometimes it's three months, sometimes it's four months, sometimes five. But he tallied it all up, Tommy, since, since they first started that, and there's a month missing that they're paying for. And Rick's very sharp cookie. And anyway, there's a month in there somewhere that the money disappeared.
Okay.
So I would really like that to be.
We will look at that this week, and we can get back with you guys.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Moving along, I have a motion to, uh, set Gala Ford to read out the twenty seventeen file.
I make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Follow where you say you are. All right, consider approval of billing permits, I don't believe we had any, unless you had some coming in, or not.
We do not. Weird.
No. All right, here's the city administrator's bi-week report.
All right. We've, we've been working on Merrell Avenue, uh, with our water main, and, uh, we've been working on it for the last three weeks, strictly because we got rained out for a couple of of those weeks. We had, the, the ditch was full of water, we kinda had to pump it out, we had to let, dry it out a little bit. We had some valves that were replaced, we've had some, uh, water meters that were moving from the back of the house to the front of the house, and that alley going up, uh, between Eighth and Ninth Street. We finally got all that done, we've got the, the top put back on, well, we'd covered it up. We still need to, to patch it with road, with, with our road department, but we're finally making headway. So on Merrell, uh, we should be finished up right after Thanksgiving, I'm gonna call it thirty November, and then we'll be able to move on to, there's a lot of meters we need to go ahead and, uh, swap to the, to our new main water line on Eighth, so we'll, we'll proceed with that December the first and go forward.
If the water line come all the way down Eight Three, it's kind of in service?
It is in service, yes, and, and some people are already on it. If you look at a map from Park to going up Eighth, the left-hand side of Eighth is pretty much already on it, it's all the, the houses on the right side, so, and I figured we could do two a day, take us two weeks to, to knock all of it out. And, and that's on a good day, it may be, it may run us a couple extra days, but it stays dry, and, you know. It, it's been a little, been a little wet, so, uh, let's see. Our citywide cleanup was, uh, Saturday, it was a huge success, we had a lot of garbage delivered. Uh, in fact, we estimated around twenty thousand pounds trash, and I don't even know how many tires, but we got it all streets, and, uh, so.
And there was still some residual, you know, picking up today.
Yeah, yeah.
People couldn't get.
Right, some of it, it may trickle out to the rest.
It was good, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, so we, we really, in fact, uh, Republic couldn't keep up with, uh, with the amount that was coming in.
We had, my phone was a little on the ground.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so.
Where would I have done, put my stuff?
Yeah. Uh, we, we've started taking down some buildings, uh, some of the houses that had been on, had burned, uh, we had four burnouts, no, three. Uh, one on Seventh is down, one on Thirteenth is down, uh, let's see, we were working on, uh, there's one down in, right off of Hutchings, I believe, there's two of them over there that are, need to be taken down, I think currently they're on, on Broadway, taking, uh, it's, it's a couple blocks, blocks up from Alstons, uh, used to be Bob's Sixth House, so they're, they're taking it down, uh, and this is just a good, good time to clean up, and, uh, so that's what we're doing. And, uh, let's see. Our new fire truck came in, uh, I believe it was not last Friday, but Friday before, and, uh, so it's in, they've had the volunteers out there cleaning it up, so shining really good. I, I think the newspaper's been down there to, uh, take pictures and do a whole story about it, and, uh.
Is it gonna be in the parade?
Uh, the next parade I'm, that we have, I'm sure it'll be in there. And, uh, I'm not sure, but the high school kids may have taken a ride on it already. I don't know for sure.
For sure.
It is, it is, and, uh, let's see, uh, also, they got a, the fire department got a grant from AEP, uh, for five hundred dollars, that they're gonna use for equipment on the truck, so, uh, which is, you know, exciting, and, uh, let's see, uh, the grant administrator, uh, AJ Halco, uh, will be here tomorrow, uh, so we can get started with our paperwork, anything that we need, uh, she's gonna help us, you know, with the engineering and, and everything else, so we'll get that going as soon as possible. Additionally, uh, they had talked to us about other grants going forward. Typically, you have a, a plan, uh, you know, a long-range, ten-year plan as to your infrastructure, what you wanna do with your, your water, your roads, your wastewater, uh, drainage, you know, uh, even economic development. And I, I believe Tommy had, had, had already had this plan going, uh, and, uh, so we're resurrecting it, it's, uh, it was done in twenty-ten, and, uh, it's good till twenty-thirty, so we're gonna review this plan that we have, and, uh, we're gonna work with the grant administrator to see what grants we're gonna need in six months, in a year, two, you know, two years, three years, four years down the road, so we can get a plan as to, uh, what all we wanna do until twenty-thirty, so, uh, and we'll, we'll review that for tomorrow. I think that's all we had at the moment. Is there any questions, or?
All right, thank you, sir. Hey, request for future Janahyde and City Councils, anything else that needs to be on the agenda, please. Y'all are always right tonight, and you start texting anyone.
Start getting calls.
All right, thank y'all for coming in tonight, we're getting ready to go into executive session, appreciate you, have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. All right, council have a motion?
All right, council has a motion.
I'll just say you're right. I'm going to motion to uphold termination and deny the grievance. Sound proper?
In a second. Favor?
Hi. Say about it, uh.
I'm gonna. All right?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right, must adjourn.
I'm gonna.
Second? How favor say I?